This is for all.
The council did not meet in closed session, so we're going to proceed directly to our regular agenda items, the general administration functions. We're going to skip item 1A, 1B, and 1C at this time and return to them after our recess and move directly to our election-related items. Item 2, which is a consideration of Resolution 10-78, accepting the official canvas and certification of the November 2, 2010 election, and declaring elected Christopher Cobaldon mayor, Mark F. Johansson, and Christopher Ledesma city council. Madam Clerk?
Yes, good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. On November 15, the county clerk completed the canvas of the November 2, 2010 election. That canvass is before you and attached to the resolution. As you know, Election Code Section 10263 requires that this council adopt by resolution the resolution and the official canvas and the certification. And as you mentioned, the resolution before you declares reelected Mayor Cobaldon and Councilmember Johansson and newly-elected member Chris Ledesma.
Are there questions for the clerk?
Move the item.
What's that?
Move the item.
Oh, all right. It's been moved by Mr. Beers and seconded by Mayor Protem Viegas. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed hearing none, that motion carries and the resolution is adopted. We're going to invite Mr. Ledesma to take his seat at the city council, but first invite Mr. Beers, who has served with great distinction and accomplishment. The council members all gave lengthy and heartfelt tributes to Mr. Beers at our last meeting, when we knew that there wouldn't be lots of children, and we had to listen through hours and hours of accolades. But to summarize, Mr. Beers is among the few people in this community who has contributed to virtually every significant public project, every community advance. He and his wife, Jolaine, are everywhere in West Sacramento, and we see them not just in their in-person, but in the places and institutions that they've helped to craft that have made West Sacramento so successful and the place that it is. And we'd like to invite him to say a few remarks upon his retirement after many years on the city council.
Well, thank you, Christopher. And first of all, I'd like to congratulate you and Mr. Johansson and Mr. Ledesma for your elections. And I know the community is well-served by your continued service and Mr. Ledesma's new service. When you add it up, I was two years on the planning commission and 14 and 1/2 years on the council, which right now I think I'm tied with the mayor for length of time. Nobody will ever catch our esteemed senior colleague down the row. But I do want to just thank the community for all your support. I want to thank the staff. We have a terrific staff. Not only are they really qualified, but they've, especially our employees, have really stepped up to the plate over these last couple of years and made personal sacrifices, and I really respect all of that. We have a wonderful community, and it's been a pleasure to serve it. And I've lived here all my life and continue, well, continue to do that. And I finally want to thank my wife for all her support. It's been great. Thank you.
Well, I'm glad that the mayor was able to summarize that, because I was jokingly telling Wes earlier, I said, "Man, I'm sure glad that I don't have to remember all the nice things that I said about you at the last meeting, because I can't repeat them. I don't remember what I said, unfortunately." But it really has been a pleasure working with Wes. I've known him for quite some time, and I can absolutely guarantee this community is a much better place for all of us today because of the work that he and Jolaine do in this community, and they've said they're going to continue to do. So we'll continue to be as fortunate as we've been in the past. So thanks again.
Thank you. Mr. Ledesma, your seat awaits you. May I get a badge? All right, I now recognize Mr. Ledesma. Invite you to make a few remarks.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you to the rest of the council members for the warm reception.
Mr. Ledesma, I have to cut you off, because you're not actually legally here yet. I have to invite the city clerk first to swear you into office.
I wasn't going to say anything, Mr. Mayor.
But thanks for visiting. So we now invite the clerk to conduct the oath of office.
I would like to begin the swearing-ins, and with that, I'd like to start with Councilmember Johansson. Okay, here we go. Raise your right hand, repeat after me. Aye. You state your name.
I am Mark Johansson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I will bear true, full faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And to the Constitution of the State of California.
And to the Constitution of the State of California.
And that I take this obligation freely.
And I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Councilmember elect Ledesma? Raise your right hand, say after me. I state your name.
I, Chris Ledesma.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear full faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And to the Constitution of the State of California.
And to the Constitution of the State of California.
That you take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that you will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which you are about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations. I state your name.
I, Christopher Cobaldon.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That you will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And to the Constitution of the State of California.
And to the Constitution of the State of California.
That you take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that you will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which you are about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Not yet. We're going to Mr. Johansson first. Mr. Johansson, congratulations. Welcome back, and I would like to invite you to make any remarks tonight on the occasion of your reelection.
Well, yeah, I'd like to thank the city of West Sacramento and thank also my colleagues and the folks running in the last election. It was one of the most enjoyable elections I've been through. They were very positive. I think everybody was really on the same page in terms of where this city is going. And, you know, I think West Sacramento is really gaining a reputation in the region for a city council that cooperates, and we all have our differences that, you know, expose themselves to a certain degree during campaigns, but we always end up working together for the common good of West Sacramento. So I'm really looking forward to the next four years. There's a lot of work that we need to do. We're still having, going through hard times here in terms of the city budget, but I have nothing but optimism for West Sacramento and look forward to working with the community in the next four years. All right. Mr.? Excuse me. I'd like to thank my wife and... Thank you.
All right, Mr. Ledesma?
You sure?
Yes, this time for sure.
Twice.
A little hazing of our new language.
Thank you again. I'll try again. Thanks, Mr. Mayor, and thanks to the other city council members, not just for the warm greeting tonight, but since the election, you've all reached out and been very welcoming, and it certainly makes it a lot easier transition into this role. So thank you. I'll start and thank everyone for coming out, especially I want to thank my wife, Maria, and my two kids, Elaine and Isabella, for enduring what we went through. It was a very nice election, a very energetic and fun election, but it was a lot of work, so I thank you for putting up with it for the last six to seven months and being so supportive. It means a lot to be able to look out at you guys and know that we're doing this together. I'd like to thank all my family and friends, the numerous family and friends that came out tonight, and I haven't seen the council crowded this crowded in a while. So thank you all for your support. But I also want to thank the many neighbors and friends that I met along the way in West Sacramento, that I met over the years since I've been here and my wife has been here. We have a tremendous community, a spirited community, and we're all our endeavor to make this a better community. I will continue to try to work towards that with this council. They've done tremendous work already, and I just can't wait to get to work and work with them and continue to do things we've been doing. So I look forward to working with the staff. I've had the pleasure of starting meeting with them. So thank you for your, again, for being so open and helpful in these early days. I look forward to working with all of you. So thank you all.
Well, as Mr. Beers said, no one has served anywhere near as long as Mr. Kristof. I now have the distinction. I finally have achieved the same number of elections as Mr. Kristof. I just have to run twice as often as he does. But it says a lot about our council. I think Mr. Kristof and I have both been elected seven times now, and Mr. Viegas three times, Mr. Johansson twice. It is the most stable city council. Mr. Beers, who just exited the dais, has been with us for even longer than I had. It is a sign of stable leadership, but also consistent values in the community. And you would never know it by watching our debates in the community or reading the letters to the editor or now some of the Facebook blogs and everything else. Politics and community activities are a contact sport in West Sacramento, and we're very lively and vibrant. And although this was a nice election in some ways, it was also loud and obnoxious and everything that politics sometimes can be and occasionally should be. But it belies the fundamental consensus that there is in our community about who we are, what makes us special, the small town, the connectedness, the sense of place, the sense of people and family, and this aspiration and this hope and optimism and belief that we can get just about anything done. And that is not normal. You go around the region or around the rest of the state, and you hear so often now how different we are. Just this morning, Charlene Hamilton, who's in the audience, the director of the planning department, and I were both on the Fox 40 show, was the latest of a number of stories on how, why is West Sacramento so amazing? And it is that sense of common purpose. And so I really appreciate the opportunity to be able to serve in this community and the belief that everyone here has in what's possible and what we can all do together. I, you know, after the oath, made a point of just saying, you know, hang in there to Councilmember Ledesma's wife, Maria, and I was thinking the same thing about both Wes and Jolaine, because sometimes politics in our community, I think, is too nasty. And too often, we are, we don't treat people who are serving, volunteering, whether it's on the council or on commissions or city staff people or, you know, folks who are working at the rec center volunteering to teach swimming, we don't treat them with the kinds of respect that they deserve. And this is hard work, and it takes a lot of sacrifice. And during this campaign, the Ledesma family went through a lot in their own lives and struggled through it, not because they needed this high-paying job that pays a couple hundred dollars a month, but because they care about the community and know that it'll only be better if people like them and all the rest of us step up and do something. And for the last two years, Mr. Beers has been here every week despite the incredible struggle of his granddaughter to hold on to her life and with he and his wife, Jolaine, providing the basic amounts of care. And when I watch people, you know, write nasty letters or say nasty things, we can disagree without saying that we don't care or that we don't believe in each other and in this community. And I hope that after, you know, one more election, and this has been, you know, the seventh or eighth or ninth or 10th election in a row, with a big margin of consistent results across the board, right, where there was no, there's been no big disagreements in this city, that we can see that there is a consensus and that even if we don't agree on everything, that we shouldn't be believing, we shouldn't be questioning people's motives so much, that we shouldn't be so mean sometimes, and that we should really be thinking about all the great things that we've accomplished and work together to make the community even better. And so it's people like Wes and Jolaine and Maria and Chris that I think exemplify that. And I hope that we take their example and their sacrifice seriously and that we challenge ourselves to call on our own better angels as we all participate in the betterment of our community, because it's not those five people up here that make this happen. It's all those people that we sometimes complain about at the rec center or at the park or at the, when we go pay our utility bill or whatever. They are stepping up trying to do something for our community, and we ought to respect that. So thank you very much. I know a lot of folks in this room have been supporters of me personally, and I really appreciate it. But for me, this is long ago, no longer, you know, me running for office, not at all about me. It's about what we're trying to accomplish in this community. I sincerely believe in it and believe in our potential, and I really appreciate the opportunity to serve. So with that, we're going to take a recess. No, we're not taking a recess. I'm so overcome that I keep messing up the agenda. We're actually moving on to item four, which is the consideration of selection of the mayor pro tem. Madam Clerk, do you have a report on this item?
Just briefly, Mayor, that the last bit of election-related activity is during an election year that the council select among itself a mayor pro tem.
All right. Then we will open the nominations for mayor pro tem.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Kristof? I would move that Mark Johansson be nominated. I would nominate him. Mark has been on the council for a full term and another full term coming up, and he has not had the privilege of serving as mayor pro tem. And I think it is only appropriate that now be the time that he start that process. I think we've all done it, and I think it's time for Mark to move forward.
All right. Any further nominations?
Mr. Mayor?
Mayor Protem Viegas?
I would nominate Mr. Kristof for that position.
All right. Are there any further nominations? I'm not eligible, so please, nobody nominate me. All right. Seeing done, we'll close the nominations. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Johansson?
Johansson.
Councilmember Ledesma?
Mr. Kristof.
Councilmember Kristof?
Mr. Johansson.
Councilmember Viegas?
Mr. Kristof.
Mayor Cobaldon?
Mr. Kristof.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Kristof is elected.
Well, I'd like to make a couple of comments. I certainly appreciate that, and probably the first time I can remember in the 20, 25 years, I didn't vote for myself and got elected to something. Wow! But I haven't said that. I will do my best to fulfill the duties, and I hope I can follow in the footsteps that Oscar has led. He's done a yeoman's job as being the vice mayor for a couple of years in a row. And again, just thank you. I'm sort of humbled and speechless, but thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now, will somebody stop me if I'm wrong this time?
That's it.
Okay. We are now going to take a recess. We're scheduled to begin again at 7:00. We're going to start again at 7:10 sharp, and we have to start at 7:10 sharp because we are, now that 40% of the city council is former high school football players, the first order of business of the new city council is going to be honoring the River City High School Raiders on their amazing season this year. I can see through the glass that they are already here. So we, I'm actually going to say 7:05, because I don't want to create a mad rush one way or the other. So we're going to recess for 10 minutes. We have some cookies and fruits and other refreshments here, but we want to take a few minutes for folks to be able to mingle and congratulate and thank one another. So thank you, everyone, for being here, and we'll recess and reconvene at 7:05. We'll recess and reconvene at 7:05. Proceed to Item 1A, which is Presentations by the Public on Matters Not on the Agenda but Within the Jurisdiction of the City Council. And we do ask that anyone wishing to address the council on this or any other agenda item this evening to please fill out one of the yellow cards that's available at the front door, and then to turn it in to the city clerk. In front of the clerk is a timer that we use to assure that everyone has a chance to be heard. And to that end, we ask that all comments be limited to no more than three minutes. Also in front of the clerk is a flip chart that indicates which agenda item we are on at any time during the meeting. We recognize that for a lot of folks, speaking in public can involve some anxiety, so we ask that there not be any boos, or cat calls, or even applause, or other demonstrations, that we just maintain a civil discourse here in the chambers. And I think I have killed just about enough time for the whole team to be close to end. So we're going to first proceed under Item 1A to a special presentation. And I'd like to turn it over, as I mentioned earlier, we now have two former high school football players on the West Sacramento City Council, which I think is probably the most of any city in the Sacramento region, if not all of California. And so I'd like to turn at least the beginning part of this presentation over to first two councilmember, Oscar Viegas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, everybody, for, they're still filtering through, I think. But, you know, I couldn't help myself, you know, having been born and raised in this community and tracking the football season that these young men were experiencing. You know, you want to celebrate at every opportunity and take advantage of celebrating the tremendous season that they had through and through. This, you know, the coaches that coached this year's team, they were born and raised here in West Sacramento, and this is what you worked for all year long. You know, you don't just show up and find yourself a championship ring. You know, you got to work very hard. And I know every one of you knows exactly how hard you had to work to get to where you were, so you should be very proud of yourselves. But I couldn't help as the season went along, you know, and folks weren't, maybe some people weren't believing it. Certainly, people here in West Sacramento were, but people across the river or around the region weren't quite believing exactly what you guys knew you had, which is quite a special team. And as I was reading the newspapers and as the season was going along, and people started talking about opportunities, and, you know, you guys deserve to be where you are. And then I couldn't help myself. And when I read this, I thought, this is exactly what epitomizes, you know, that sort of the West Sacramento spirit. When you guys started talking about, you know, you went from 3-7 last year to this year, not only have you, you know, enjoyed a successful season, but you wanted a shot at Grant. You weren't even messing around with, you know, you want to make the playoffs, you wanted to, you guys were talking about a shot at one of the perennial winners of this entire region, you know, a nationally ranked team, a number-one team in California. You guys wanted a piece of that. And that's huge. That's a huge step. The coaches obviously inspired you to believe in yourselves, to get to where you were. And so I know you've gotten recognition for your tremendous season. You should be extremely proud of yourselves. I know a lot of us tracked every step you guys made, and we couldn't be more proud of you guys representing what you guys were able to accomplish and representing our entire community. And so I thought it'd be appropriate to have at least one more recognition of the tremendous season that each and every, one of you guys participated in, and should be very proud of yourselves.
Mr. Kristof? Mayor Protem Kristof?
Yeah, I too would really like to congratulate you. It was sort of interesting to watch, especially as Oscar had indicated, watch the newspapers, you know, the first win, the second win. All of a sudden, you're 5-0, and all of a sudden, you're 6-0, and all of a sudden, you're 7-0, you know? And you start to get the recognition and respect from the media and from the other outlets. You guys knew you had it. I mean, you know, I can remember when I played, it was 1963 when we won it all. But it certainly wasn't set up like it was set up now for the championship games and all the other kinds of things. But really proud of you for what you have done, for you, your coaches, your parents, everybody that gets involved in all of that, the supporters. You help take this community to a different level. We got a lot of recognition because of what you guys did. And it is really, really gratifying to be in Folsom or to be someplace else and to hear, hey, River City Raiders, you know? I mean, and, you know, it's really, really gratifying to hear that. You gained a lot of respect, and I know you'll kick Grant's ass next year, but that's another start. So thank you all.
Mr. Johannesen?
Yeah, without repeating what my brother talked about, it's really to be congratulated for all the hard work you put into this and the discipline. And it really does show about West Sacramento and the attitude. I mean, we spoke about it earlier here, that as a council, as a city, we've got a can-do attitude. You know, we're going to do things the way we want to do it, and we're going to move forward and do it. And you all showed really that spirit at your level, putting the hard work in and not wavering and really doing a good job. So I really congratulate you and looking forward to next year.
All right, I guess I misspoke 60% of the city council as former high school football players. I didn't follow Mr. Kristof's earlier career, so that's...
Well, it wasn't under James Marshall, guys, though. I mean, I'm going back.
They're not... Yeah, that's okay. But almost two-thirds of the city council are former high school football players. It's got to be a record, including our newest member, Mr. Ledesma.
Thank you. And without, again, repeating what the other council members said, I just want to congratulate you on a season that the city will remember for generations. You guys really set a standard of football and athletics at your school that you should be proud of. You guys, Mr. Mayor mentioned it, that we played a long time ago, and I was privileged to play on a team that won a championship. And I remember those days vividly. And you guys remember these days vividly, so soak it up. I saw on the camera that you guys got a little bit of camera time, which I'll ask them to get the camera off me and show you guys, so you can go back and watch this later. These are days you'll treasure, more so because you helped lift the community. The whole city was tracking you guys. You did a great job of carrying yourselves through it with class, with grace, and as Mr. Viegas has said, with a can-do attitude that is really representative of our city. So congratulations. I know it's a lot of work you guys went through to get to this point. So congratulations to the coaches as well. I know you've put a lot of heart and soul into this program, and we're so proud of it. So thank you, guys, very much, and enjoy yourselves. Smile a little bit over there, it's okay.
The coach doesn't allow that. And the coaches put more than heart and soul into it. I wasn't at the wrestling match, but they put their bodies on the line, too. And the coaches have been a major part of this story for the team and for the inspiration that they provide, I think, for the community. Because high school, the football is, this isn't just about the game, it's about what it takes to succeed in life, what it means to be part of a family, what it means to try to work on something together. And the coaching staff for this team, both Chris and Art have been absolutely astounding. So I do want to make a plug, you know, the B has still got its poll going for the best coach of the region. I think it's open until December 20th, right? And, you know, we're number two, but it doesn't take too many of us in West Sac to make our coaches get the recognition that they deserve as number one. So if you're watching this right now, live or on tape, make sure you stop by the B Sports website. And if you can't find the link, go to westsacweb.com and find it, and make sure to vote for Coach Art and Coach Chris. This has been an astonishing season. I've been, I was at several of the games, and the quality of play, the intensity of play, the sportsmanship on the field, the heart, and the commitment through everything, even, you know, when the scores were lopsided and it seemed like, well, you know, let's just kick back, there was no kicking back. It was, we're still doing this. We're in this to make a point. This is about what we do, this is what we believe, and this is what we're proud of. And you can't ask for anything more than that. And it made people so proud in this community. And at those games, the turnout from residents of this community, you know, some of whom had, you must have been your parents, but a lot of them were not. A lot of them didn't have any kids at River City, but who were so inspired and so excited and so enthusiastic. And you stoked that. You lit that fire in this community, and that's something we're very, very proud of. You know, you were the River Cats of the southern half of the city for just a little while during the year, and it really stood out. It was a team that did justice to the $100 million high school that the residents of this community voted for. You know, when they, every year when I pay my property taxes for that new high school, I know it's to support exactly this kind of quality team and this kind of quality sports program. And so you definitely made a statement that said, "Thank you" to the community for our new sports facilities, and we're going to make it, we're going to make it work. So thank you so very much. This team really was about the story of West Sacramento. People throughout the region saw yet again, you know, it's a place that got written off, the B said, you know, Raiders are nothing, and every week had eat their words. And it's just exactly the same story that our community has been through over the last 20 years. And so thank you so much for doing all that. We know you weren't doing it for all those reasons. Well, maybe you were. But I hope what you, one of the things that you've learned is that through working hard at an immediate goal like that, that you can have a huge impact, even beyond what you're trying, in trying to get that extra couple of yards, that you really can inspire a whole city, a whole community, to think better and to think higher and to think stronger. Thank you very much. We do want to present to the coaching staff, we've got certificates for each member of the team on behalf of the city, certificates of achievement, recognizing on behalf of the 47,000 residents of West Sacramento, the really astonishing achievement of the River City High School Raiders this year. We're not going to go through all of them tonight, but we are going to, I'm going to ask the coaches to come to the podium, and we'll present it to him, and then he will, he'll distribute it. But again, on behalf of the whole council and the whole community, I want to say thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, on behalf of the players and all the coaches, we're honored to be here tonight. They were very excited about coming tonight. They were asking me what to wear, what did they say, what, did they comb their hair, what do they do? I think most of them look okay, so we'll be all right. Any recognition that we can get for the work the kids did, you know, is always welcome. It's nice for people to go, oh, there's a job well done. So, and it is correct. You gentlemen said it tonight, they're going to remember this forever. You know, after they've gone and had kids and their kids are back at the school, they're going to remember their days when they were tearing it up on Friday nights. And so I think, you know, a certificate like this, being here on the big time on the stage is going to be, it's going to be good for them. And so I'm not, I'm a man of little words, so I'm done, and thank you very much, and we're all excited to be here. Thank you.
So what we'd like to do now is invite the team to join us for a group photo. And maybe what we could do for the audience and for the folks at home is just ask, as members of the team are individually filing in to, in front of the dais, and will come and join you, if, Coach, if you could introduce them by name as they're coming forward, so we can... Okay?
Just come on, come on through, guys. We have Doug Sandoval, TJ Soto, Adam Tyson, Johnny Gomez. You're going to have to, a lot of these guys, I just call them by their last names, so sometimes I'm going to mix them up. We got Leggett, James Wright, we got Roger Ugo, we got Ringer, Herman, we got Brown, we got Mason, Clark, Sunshine. Come on down, guys, come on down. Saldana, we got Tyler, we got Moore, three-years varsity player right there, we got David, we got Jones, we got Eddie, this is Vicente, we got Anthony, we got Alan, we got Maurice, came up for playoffs, one of our sophomores, we got Ricky Garza, Uvaldo, we got Mafi, one of our smallest players, and we got young Miles over here. Can we get the coaches up here, too?
Okay, okay. Now the regular meeting? All right, returning to item 1A, we do have a couple of requests to speak under this item. The first is by Jim Brewer on behalf of the Brighton-Broadway Community Action Network.
Thank you, and congratulations to everyone that was elected to office again this year. I'm here tonight on two issues. The first one is that on December 7th, we're going to have in the Galleria down below, BB Can in partnership with UCD Landscape Architectural School is conducting a showing of the students' work on designing a healthier West Sacramento. We have taken 38 students and have conducted tours with them throughout the city of West Sacramento, looking at current projects at old historic areas of town. And they're gonna give us ideas such as how to improve a park. You'd be surprised at some of the innovative ideas they've come up with. They're really, really, really good stuff. So anyway, I would encourage everyone that can come, December 7th, Galleria downstairs. It'll be from 6:00 to 8:00 o'clock in the evening. The second item, which is very appropriate, is the Sacramento Historical Society is partner with the city in the new community center. And over the last several months, six or seven months, we'd been developing the athletes of West Sacramento. We have photos, life stories, personal interviews. And in January, it looks like we're going to be able to have a dedication ceremony of that work. And those pictures will end up on the recreation center's wall at the new recreational center. So there's 20 of these photos and individuals that we have been able to get from history. Some of them are well-known, Joey Lopes, Stevie Sax, those kind of guys. Some stories are absolutely triumphant, and others are tragedy, but it's all part of our history. And I just spoke to the coach, and hopefully they'll be able to come to that ceremony and see what has gone on in our community before them, because they, tonight and during the games, they've joined that same kind of group. So it's that. So, anyway, that's, thank you very much for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brewer. We have both a request to speak and a written comments request from Paul. And you'll have to help me with your last name. Mine, you've said it before, and mine always gets butchered the second time, so maybe you could just help.
It's Puesh, as if it were spelled P-W-E-S-H.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I'll have to speak fast, because there's two pages. My name is Paul Puesh. I'm a longtime resident of West Sacramento over 20 years. For the past few years, I've not been living in West Sacramento at my residence at 625 Smilex. It has been and remains a major remodeling project for years. I have experienced major problems with contractors since my remodeling began. The first contractor went to jail for eight months, and the second contractor died, only after I paid him the entire contract amount. Due to the massive cost runovers, overruns, I am now near bankruptcy. I appear here because of the problem with another contractor, Marquis Pipeline Incorporated. Marquis is a contractor who contracts with the city to install residential water meters. Here's my issue. Can a contractor deface a homeowner's property and not be held liable? In other words, if a licensed contractor causes damage to a homeowner's property due to his or her negligence while working for the city, should the homeowner be financially responsible for the associated costs? I believe the contractor's supervisor had agreed to place the water meter on the residential side of the fence, my house says a fence around it. In other words, in front of my front yard adjacent to the driveway. This is supported by the fact that Marquis initially dug a deep hole, approximately one to two feet deep, on the residential side of the fence near the front. When I initially met with the workers, they told me that the city had given them the wrong location for the pipes and thus precluded them from installing the water meter. I showed them where the water cutoff valve was and the water meter on the sidewalk was. Didn't matter. They advised me that they'd have to contact the city for the correct location. The workers told me that they would get back to me with a response within a few weeks. I specifically instructed them to, and pleaded with the workers, to contact me personally before doing any work on the project, since the house, I'm not living there, I don't, I'm not there all the time. They agreed and said that I would be contacted on my cellphone prior to any work being done. I did not receive a cellphone call in advance or any other notice from the contractor. I was first notified by my neighbor. I stopped what I was doing, rushed over to the residence, and noticed the contractor had painted an area where they were planning to cut. Subsequently, the contractor returned to the residence and prepared to do the cut. However, I advised them that the meter was to be installed on the inside of the property, as previously noted, and left the gate open after I spoke with him to ensure that they were able to get access to the property. He indicated that he'd have to contact his supervisor and get back to me. I had to depart the property to and to end another business project concern. And to my surprise, upon returning the property about an hour later, the contractor had cut a slab out of the driveway in the front. I immediately complained to Derek Goodwin, the city engineer in charge of the water meter installation, and had agreed to visit my, and he agreed to visit my residence.
Goes fast.
It does. It's written down. Do you have any questions?
At this time, and we do have the written note, and I also note that you have, there's a Friday, that it's a time is of the essence.
It's very important, yeah. And I'm willing to pay out $300 for that work done. And that's, should be covered with giving them profit.
Okay. Given that timeframe, I mean, all we can do at this, at this meeting is refer the matter to the city manager from us. We're prohibited from, by law, from discussing it or taking action on it here, but only to direct the city manager to look into it. All right. All right. And then Bill Lowell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. William Lowell, West Sacramento, for the record. And I know you're very proud of this section of West Capitol Avenue from Jefferson Boulevard eastward. And I just, I think I should share this with you. It was a Thursday before Thanksgiving. I was coming from Safeway, and I, like I had done hundreds of times before, I'd crossed over the corner of the, what do you call it, the non-level grass. And I don't remember if there was, there was something there that was a little different, and it was, and it was just getting dark, and I didn't see it. And I tripped and fell. And I just had, I didn't get a sprained wrist out of it, but there was some pain. And I got to thinking, well, right where I could have gone out, there's not a wheelchair accessibility cut out, but across the street, near the, near this, an identical shelter at Walgreens, we do have a level walkway from the parking lot to the sidewalk. And rather than wait until somebody else trips and falls after that shelter, or bus stop and shelter has been moved from the other side of Jefferson to this side, I think it would make sense to put in a level walkway near the shelter on this side of West Capitol, like we have on the other side, next to Walgreens, and prevent those kinds of accidents from happening in the future. And also, I've noticed, as nice a thing has been going at the transit center, one thing has been missing or not, apparently not been considered, and that is, there's been some freezing nights. And I've seen, I've seen kids stranded there. And since our buses only run every hour, why, here they are. When our buses get there, maybe five minutes late, so they have to wait 55 minutes. So we need something over there to allow them to retreat out of that freezing weather, because sometimes they leave the house, what, not anticipating the weather, and they come home by bus, and here they are, stuck over there. And there's no restaurants, no eateries, nothing like that. So I think we need something like that to accommodate those riders during the later hours. And...
Thank you, Mr. Lowell.
I'll let it, I'll let it go at this time.
All right. Thank you.
All righty.
Thank you.
Right. Item 1B is Council of Communications. Are there any reports or other communications? Mr. Johansson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The West Sacramento Housing Development Corporation met, and the main issue that had come up was a problem in the River Rose property. Basically, what's happening is there's, the tenants are good tenants, but they're letting people into this complex, leaving the gate open. And they've had some vandalism there. So they're looking at working, trying to get a live-in manager at this particular property to keep a better eye on it, and possibly look at, look at some type of transitional housing use for that, to have more eyes on this property as it moves forward. Apparently, the vandals trashed the laundry room, which, you know, caused significant damage to there. And the Yellow County Pet Animal Welfare Society had a meeting on November 19th. This was a full morning meeting on a Friday. And basically, this was a follow-up to the stakeholder group dealing with the animal shelter in Yellow County and the problems that we're having. We had a good lively discussion on, you know, what the problem is, what the solutions may be. We had a person from Reno running a, it's called a zero-kill facility, where basically it's a animal shelter, public animal shelter, where there's no euthanasia. And they do that with a combination of a good spay-neuter program, good public education program about pets in general, and a good adoption program. And also, they've been able to use private foundations to help supplement the funds, so they can care for the animals while they're there in a good, good manner. Part of the problem is that, in the shelters, if the conditions become so crowded, the animals become less adoptable. So the euthanasia rate goes up. So it was basically a public comment meeting, so we'll see what the report of those comments results in. And the stakeholder meeting is going to continue to meet. And at some point in the future, council will probably be presented with the status of the Yellow County Health Shelter, and also a possible collaboration of the cities and a solution.
Mr. Johansson?
Mr. Kristoff.
Real quick, because, well, anyway, the JPA Flood Association, we met last week, and we approved the contract with MBK Engineers, which is before us tonight. And so I know that Mike will give a very good presentation and everything else, so just letting council know that we, we at the JPA had approved this from the reclamation districts and in our representation. So, but we'll hear that tonight, too.
Mr. Villegas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one report, actually, earlier this evening, the Sacramento-Yolo Port Commission met, and the two items to note, I think, well, the one item of interest to, I think, to many folks here is that the Outboard Club is going to expand its membership, and in part to include more district or residents from within the district, which includes more West Sacramento residents. I think that's something that's been on the radar for folks for quite some time. I know it's a difficult thing for folks to penetrate the Outboard Club and to gaining access, it's been talked about for years, to gain access to the port, which we all know is a huge recreation, well, it's a huge asset, and we'd like it to serve more as a recreational asset. And I think we took a step this evening in our licensing agreement with the club, with our agreement with the club, to expand membership of residents in our community.
Yeah, the, I mean, Mr. Villegas is being modest. He was the lead commissioner working on the project, but it was, it's an increase of about 100 West Sacramento residents who are currently authorized users at the port through the club to 150. So that's, that's no small matter. And then a guarantee of, as membership openings happen on an annual basis, that at least 25% of them will be reserved for West Sacramento residents. So...
What is the process for application?
The process, as I understand it, is you contact the club president, and he will send you an application. And you fill it out, and it's pretty much that simple. It's not any more complicated than that.
Mr. Ledesma, no reports. What have you been doing? All right. Then, under the assignments portion of item 1B, I would like to make the following appointments, so that particularly those areas where Mr. Beers is no longer present, we can continue to be represented. But the change in composition always necessitates some change in our assignments. And so for the city-county two-by-two, appointing Mr. Johansson and Mr. Villegas. To the city-school two-by-two, Mr. Villegas and Mr. Ledesma. To the Delta Protection Commission, by prior order of SECOG, I'm the commissioner representing the region. And then we'll be asking them to make Mr. Ledesma the alternate. For the Executive Commission for the Homeless Tenure Plan, appointing Mr. Johansson. For the Local Agency Formation Commission, by prior order of the Mayor Selection Committee, is Mr. Kristoff. For the Port Commission, we'll make those appointments next month, as the terms of Mr. Villegas, Mr. Beers, and Mr. Johansson expire at that time. For the Regional Water Authority Board, Mr. Kristoff as the primary member, and Mr. Ledesma as the alternate. For the River City Stadium Financing Authority, Mr. Kristoff and myself. For the Sacramento Area of Council, Council of Governments, myself as the primary board member, and Mr. Ledesma as the alternate. For the Sacramento County Regional Sanitation District Board, Mr. Villegas is the primary member, and Mr. Kristoff as the alternate. For the Streetcar Policy Steering Committee, I'm trying to make this a little more complicated, but myself is continuing as the primary member, and Mr. Ledesma is the alternate, replacing Mr. Villegas. And we're gonna make, be making a request to the Yolo County Transportation District that they appoint Mr. Villegas as their representative, replacing the current mayor of Winters, so that we would have a broader, we would have equivalent representation to the Sacramento City Council in that way. For the Universal Preschool, for West Sacramento Executive Board, Mr. Villegas. For the Water Resources Association Board, Mr. Ledesma as the primary member, and Mr. Kristoff as the alternate. For the Waterfront Coordinating Committee, Mr. Ledesma and Mr. Johansson. For the West Sacramento Area Flood Joint Powers Authority Board... For the West Sacramento Area Flood, uh, Joint Powers Authority Board, Mr. Kristoff is the primary. Mr. Ledesma is the alternate. For the West Sacramento Housing Development Corporation Liaison, Mr. Johansson. For the Yolo Children's Alliance Board, uh, that will be taken up by the Mayor Selection Committee on Monday, but it's my intent to nominate Mr. Ledesma. For the Yolo County Transportation District Board, Mr. Viegas is the primary member and Mr. Ledesma as the alternate. For the Yolo Natural Heritage Program, JPA Board, uh, Mr. Ledesma. For the Youth Commission Liaison, the, uh, Mr. Viegas. And for the Yolo Solano Air Quality Management District Board, Mr. Ledesma as the primary member and Mr. Johansson as the alternate. Those would be the appointments, and I'd ask if there's a motion to?
I do have one quick question. On the, uh, Yolo Natural Heritage Program, I have Councilmember Ledesma and is Councilmember Johansson remaining as an alternate?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes. All right, so, is there any questions or discussion? Is there a motion to approve the appointments? It's been moved.
Oh, seconded.
And seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, hearing done, that motion carries. Thank you, and it seems like every year there's more and more of these assignments. Appreciate everyone's willingness to do the extraordinary amount of meetings and work that are involved in all these boards, but they certainly have paid dividends for the city in the past. All right, item one C is appointments to boards and commissions. Uh, and is the, uh, deadline for applications for the 2011, 2012 term for the city's various commissions and boards was, um, yesterday. And each member of the council has received a packet this evening with all of the applications. And, uh, and there are quite a few, and, uh, I think we have, continue to get more and more each, each cycle. And so members of the coun-, we've, uh, the, the last meeting outlined the process and the timeframe for those appointments. But simply would ask members of the council to go through the applications. And if you're interested in interviewing, um, particular individuals, if you would at least coordinate that with the city clerk's office so that individual applicants, you know, if, if they're, if it's avoidable, we'd like to not ask them to interview five different times. If they can coordinate them, then that would be, be helpful. But otherwise we'll follow the timeframe that's in, in the packets with nominations submitted to me later this month. And then in January, a slate of appointments will be presented to the council for, for your approval so that the commissions can, uh, the newly constituted commissions can begin their work in January. Right, and Madam Clerk, uh, Mr. Mr. Mayor Protem Kristoff reminded me that we have a vacancy now in the Planning Commission that they have a meeting in, uh,
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Do we have any reason to believe that they have a problem with a quorum?
There was some concern expressed, I'm not sure if that's been resolved or not.
Okay, all right, no problem. Okay, then, then I'm not going to bother with an interim appointment. All right, then that concludes item one C, and that brings us to the consent agenda, which is items five through 10. Are there any, uh, questions or comments or any item to remove off the consent agenda?
The only thing is, is we have a, an update on a day for the council, meeting schedule. And I would move that we add that to the, add that, ma- make sure that becomes part of the record.
Okay, all right. So as, when the motion's made on the consent agenda, it will include the recommended change to item 10? Any other questions or comments on consent?
Nope.
We had one request for public comment, and that's on item nine, and by Mr. Lowell. Uh, Mr. Willol is waiving his request, so seeing no further discussion. Uh, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, and opposed, hearing done, motion carries, the consent agenda is adopted. That brings us to item 11, which is consideration of approval of a contract with MBK Engineers and status report on the flood protection program. Mr. Bissette?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. And congratulations to all, re-elected and newly elected. Tonight for your consideration is the approval of a contract with MBK Engineers and a status report on the levy improvement program. MBK has been under contract to the city to provide program management since 2006. MBK has been instrumental in the success of the program to date. MBK provides key functions to the program such as program management assistance, design and construction funding agreement coordination with the state. They create and maintain our overall programs, program schedule, assist with management of design, NEPA-SEQA, and construction permitting. And they prepare our section 408 and 104 packages to the Army Corps and provide high-level coordination with the Army Corps and state. They support city staff on cash flow and bonding analysis based on the state's early implementation program guidelines. They develop design-level hydraulic analysis for our design of 2011 and 2013 projects. And they perform other important functions as listed in the staff report. This contract is intended to last for a duration of two years. Important highlights I'd like to point out. The last contract, which is, uh, ready to expire, was effectively and efficiently managed and it allowed us to extend that contract for three months under the original budget. So we're able to work very closely with MBK and be very efficient with their contract. MBK utilizes city staff as appropriate to reduce consultant hours billed. And, uh, and MBK provides real value to the city and the West Sacramento Area Flood Control Agency and is a key program partner. Before I launch into the program update, I thought I'd stop here and take questions specific to the MBK contract, if you have any.
Does anybody have any questions? Not yet.
Okay, terrific. Madam Clerk, could you put the map up? Progress has been made over the last year in efforts to bring necessary improvements to the levy system protecting West Sacramento. We are currently under design of two early implementation projects. They have been closely coordinated with our state and federal partners and our Board of Senior Consultants. We are currently at the 100% design level for those two projects. And we're working on final review process, uh, with the Army Corps and the state agencies. And we're, we will be finalizing, uh, and preparing construction bid documents for early next year. We anticipate going out to bid in the spring of next year. The two projects I'd like to highlight right now for 2011 construction, the first project, um, is the Sacramento Bypass. It's the south side of the Sacramento Bypass Levy near the CHP Academy. And that project, uh, the components of that project, it's a 6,000 linear foot project. It includes slurry wall construction and geometry improvements. And the estimated total construction cost of that project is, is right around $10 million. The other project for 2011 construction is the Rivers Project, right up near Bright Park, just north of the Bright Park. That project is a 3,000 linear foot project approximately. It includes slurry wall construction, recreational enhancements, and the estimated construction cost for that project is around $12 million. Important elements that we're working on to bring these projects into construction are real estate components that are required for these projects. We need to acquire permanent and temporary construction easements. We're preparing appraisals on the properties that are affected by these projects. And we'll be, uh, presenting offer packages, uh, very soon to, uh, the affected property owners. And we're also preparing a real estate plan that's required for DWR, Department of Water Resources, for the funding for those, uh, components, for real estate component. We're also working on our state and federal approvals for the projects. Specifically for, through the Central Valley Flood Protection Board, the encroachment permit for those two projects. And from the Army Corps, the 408 and the 104 approvals necessary for us to, to go out and do our work. We're also working on the funding aspect for those projects. We're working closely with the state Department of Water Resources. Under their early implementation program, we're putting all the necessary documentation together for the construction funding agreement component. We have a, we currently have a design funding agreement. And we're ready to enter into a construction funding agreement with the state for these two projects. We're also working on our local funding, our, our match for these projects. And we're preparing the necessary documentation and we'll be ready to, uh, issue bonds early next year for these projects. We'll provide, we'll be providing updates to the, uh, to the West SAFCA Board next month on, on the components of the real estate and on the, the local funding. And lastly, and, and really most importantly, we're working on the environmental documentation process for these projects. All the above elements that I just talked about, the real estate, uh, the funding, the permitting, they all require the environmental document to be certified by the West SAFCA Board. And we also need a record of decision by the, the US Army Corps. We, uh, we released the public draft in May and, uh, we had considerable, uh, concerns that were raised by the Department of Water Resources and Department of Fish and Game over our document. And their concerns were specific to the way that our document reflected the Army Corps' vegetation policy. So we had some extensive meetings with both DWR and Fish and Game to understand their concerns, let them know, um, what we meant by what we said in our document and how we reflected, uh, the, the Army Corps' policy throughout our programmatic analysis. We, uh, we met also with the non-governmental organization environmental groups that were concerned about the document as well. We were able to reach consensus with all those groups. And, and it, it required us to go back in and restructure our environmental document and change it from a programmatic analysis to a more project-specific for the two projects I just highlighted. And those are the, we'll be certifying a, a project-specific environmental document for those projects. So we're working on getting the revised document through the Army Corps. The state, because they have to issue permits, they're a responsible agency and they need to certify our document as well. So they need to be very comfortable with what our, how our document reflected these projects and the impacts on the environment. Bill Panos, our Public Works Director, is actually in Washington DC. And he met with the Army Corps' headquarters today. And he's, he's priming the pump over there in DC for when our document reaches them to get that review process expedited. So we're working on that as well. The, uh, the next project, which is unfortunately a little bit off the screen, I don't know if you can move, uh, move into Southport, perfect. The, the large project right along the Sacramento River, this reach right here, it's about five miles long. And this is slated for 2013 construction. This essentially, with the way things are going to be laying out from a financial standpoint, this will probably be our last early implementation project. The reason being is, once we've expended the funds that we need to for the two projects in the north, we're going to take the remaining cost share that we have available and apply it to this reach. And right now we're in the, in the stage of, of analyzing this entire reach. We don't think we'll have the money to, to build that entire reach. We're probably looking at probably construction half of it, about two miles worth, maybe, maybe two and a half. Right now we're in preliminary design stage, so we're analyzing the, the elements of that levy. We understand what the problems are. We're looking at specific analysis such as hydraulic analysis, environmental analysis, civil design, and geotechnical analysis for various options that we have to improve that levy system. We have, we have different options. We have in-place type options, uh, we have setback levy options. And they change throughout the, the reach. So we're looking at the various components and looking at analyzing all the elements that we need to so that we can make decisions on what are the proper alternatives that we want to move forward and, and, and do additional analysis on so that we can get ourselves to the point where we have, uh, a preferred alternative and, and move into the final design. So right now we're, uh, like I said, we're in preliminary design. We expect to have that completed early next year. We'll be structuring our second analysis, uh, to further, further our designs and look at expediting that to the middle of the summer. We'll, we'll be taking more information back to the city council so that you can understand the process that we're making decisions by and get your feedback on, on how we would like to move forward on that project. Additional projects that are underway, um, the Army Corps, the state, and, and ourselves, we're working very closely with them. They have, the Army Corps has just issued a construction contract for a setback levy right in this area just south of Stone Lock.
Mike, you, you do realize that the laser pointer doesn't get, does not go into there and come into our screens, right?
No, that's, that's very true, I understand.
I, I know you're an engineer, but the that's why the mouse is usually there for that purpose.
There is no mouse.
It's fine, but if you could, when you say right here, if you could give us a river mile or something that would?
Just south of Stone Lock, I think, uh, and you're doing the mouse. Just show it right in that area. We're looking at a 2,500 linear foot project there. It's a setback levy. We're also incorporating a slurry wall to mitigate for underseepage in that area. Construction is actually, uh, scheduled to begin this month. We're working very closely with the Corps' Public Affairs Office to get a public outreach effort going. They've, they've had a lot of trouble with their construction submittals, so we haven't been able to pinpoint them on an actual start date. So it's been a little difficult to try to get the word out to the public of when this project is going to start. So we're working very closely, we're hoping to put some information in the local newspapers very soon, get information on our website, and get a, a public outreach effort going for that project. That project will also relocate South River Road onto the, the, the new setback levy in that location. Another project scheduled for 2011 construction is along the Yolo Bypass, just north of Highway 80. Uh, and I won't use my laser print pointer on this one, but it's just north of Highway 80, along the Yolo Bypass. It's a 2,000 linear foot project. It's a landside slip repair project. We're working very closely with the Army Corps on the, on the designs of that project. It's currently at 60, 60% design level, and we're hoping for construction to begin next summer. So what I just highlighted, we have a lot of construction work going out next year. So 2011 is going to be a very busy year, uh, a very successful year getting into levy improvements. So we're looking at about two and a half miles plus of levy improvement work at a total cost of around $40 million. So it's very exciting to, to get that money into the ground, which we're all looking for. Other key coordination activities that the, the city's flood protection program is, is ongoing. We're coordinating very closely with Department of Water Resources on the Central Valley Flood Protection Plan that they are the primary leaders on. SB 5 mandated that the, the state complete this plan by the middle of 2012. So we're working very closely with them on that to ensure that our city interests are met. And we're going to be arranging to have the state come in and provide a presentation to the council in February of next year to give you more details of where that study is. We're also working with the State Parks Department on the California Indian Heritage Center project, which will be coming to you for an update, uh, I believe this month at the next council meeting. We're working closely with them to, so that our interests are met on the, on the levies that are adjacent to that site to ensure that, uh, improvements are made up to the standards that we're, we're looking to meet. We're also very, we're working very hard with the Army Corps on our general reevaluation report, which is a major component of the federal funding aspect to our program. I, I didn't get into any details of that tonight because we're providing a presentation at the next council meeting. We're having the Corps' Chief Planner come in and provide an update. So she'll be here, uh, on the 15th. And lastly, what, what I wanted to highlight is we've conducted our annual flood season coordination meeting where we, we get the, the local RDs together, the, the fire department, the police department, the state maintaining agencies. Uh, we have a coordination, a pre, pre-flood season or pre-wet season meeting where we exchange our phone numbers. We, we understand the conditions of the levy system, we look at forecasts for the weather. We just coordinate activities for the upcoming, uh, winter season. With that, I'll turn it over to any questions that the council may have.
Mayor Protem Kristoff?
No questions, but really sort of a comment. Mike gives us each month, uh, an update of all of the different things that are going on that he outlined tonight, a lot of that. And so, and, and he gives that to each one of the council members, we put it in the packet. I think the, the main reason for this agenda item tonight is really the first one. And that's the, the MBK Engineers contract. MBK really, and all of the things that he has outlined, MBK has been a part of that. So, I mean, I think that we're making very good progress on our, uh, flood protection issues and the things that we, we want to, to see accomplished because flood protection has been our number one. one issue. It's our number one priority. We, as a council, and I know city staff, and think that making sure the community is safe from flooding is the number one priority. I mean, it would be devastating if it wasn't. It gets a little frustrating sometimes to spend $40 million, and it takes five years to have it completed and whatever else. But, you know, hey, that's the nature of the beast. That's what -- it is what it is. And so, but at the same time, we are methodically moving forward. MBK has been a good partner and a good part of that. They seem to have a pretty decent relationship with the Corps, state reclamation with FEMA, DWR, Water Resources. And so, you know, I think that it is warranted that we move forward with -- this is an expensive item. This is over, well over a million dollars for, you know, for these kinds of services. But at the same time, I think that it is money well spent, and it's what we need to do.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem Kristoff. Are there questions or discussion? Triegus?
No, I feel very, I mean, for whatever reason, I feel very good about Mike managing this project. I think he does a wonderful job of sort of laying out the critical components, and there's a whole lot of moving parts here. The cost-sharing piece was a huge deal. It was held up for quite some time, and I think the idea that you can move the cost-sharing from the northern reaches, once they're completed, to help support the 2.5 miles to the southern reach, which is another critical reach, is a big deal as well. Is there any coordination? I know in terms of conversations that we've had, and I think to some degree in the general plan about converting the South River Road to more pedestrian-oriented and bringing the roadway below the levy, is that being considered or discussed? Or is that part of the plans as you began to do the levy work in that five-mile reach?
It is absolutely being considered. It's a matter of timing. We're going to have to look very closely at that. You know, obviously, with the economy the way it is, it hasn't, a lot of development hasn't occurred in Southport to create the need for creating that new road, Village Parkway. So we're going to have to take a hard look at how, depending on what type of levy improvement we select, if it's a setback levy, does that trigger relocation of South River Road, and at what cost? And, you know, who pays for that? So these will be hard decisions that we'll have to make, and that will be a consideration that we have.
So, right, so depending on the types of improvements that are done on the reaches, and there's different ways in which you can go about it, you may pursue the right-of-way is necessary for in the future? Should that decision be made, or should the economy come around, or should development allow it to take advantage of it? I mean, are you setting it up to be, at some point, converted uses, or is it, how's that going to work?
Well, right-of-way in real estate will be another critical component of, depending on the preferred alternative that is selected. And that's going to be a key criteria in making that selection. How much right-of-way? How much real estate do we need for the different types of fixes that we could select down there in Southport? It'll be a key component of how we make our decisions and the cost for which type.
How much you can get done, all right. So I know, to date, we've spent $15 million. By the time these two reaches, or three, I think there's four now that you're mentioning, what would be the local amount committed to these projects?
With all the projects in place...
Just the ones that you've mentioned this evening? Because I know, to date, we've invested $15 million, so what's going to be the total local investment?
You know, I don't have that number on the top of my head, but I would assume it's going to be somewheres in the range of $30 million, somewhere around there. But we are starting to get monies back from the state. We had to upfront a lot of monies to fast-track our program. We're starting to get some payback on that. And I think I highlighted in the staff report, we have a design funding agreement for $4.9 million. We've received $4.1 to date, so we've almost exhausted that design contract, and we're moving into the next one, a construction funding, which will have design components in there. We'll start getting money back on monies that we've already invested. So that $15 million that we've already laid out, we'll be getting money back for that.
Oh, that's part of it. Great, thank you.
On the South River Road issue, I just want to highlight it and put an underline mark under it because it's, this shouldn't be just a flood program decision point. What I don't want to see come back with the plans and specs for the levy improvement with the decision already having been made. This is, it's fundamental to the general plan and the Southport Framework Plan and decisions about, I mean, I understand that we don't have the dollars in the traffic fund to be able to build Village Parkway, but it, I mean, it sounds silly to rebuild South River Road when it is our intention to abandon it altogether, except as a levy access road, when it's our intention to abandon it altogether. So I understand those dynamics, but they will, they lead to policy decisions that are more than levy program decisions. And so ultimately, those, that conversation has to come to the council.
One of the things that we're exploring is the possibility that in lieu of reconstructing River Road, because with a setback levy, the existing road will be totally gone, that we apply that money towards a permanent arterial and then provide only a maintenance road on top of the levy. We haven't gotten concurrence from the state or the federal government that that's a reasonable thing to do, but that's one of the things we will be exploring.
All right. I had insisted at the beginning that we pay close attention to this MBK contract. They're talented, they have all the right resources. They're also working for every single other key player in this regard, including the Corps. So the potentials for conflict are rampant without, but there's also no better alternative just because of the, what they bring to the table and the personnel that's at their team. And so we'd asked at the very, or we had insisted when we approved the first contract and each of the amendments afterwards, that there be very assertive monitoring and accountability to make sure that it's always our interests that are being served through this contract. And I'm fully confident that that's been done. So I'm very supportive of the new contract as well. All right, so no further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Mayor Protem Kristoff?
I would move that we approve the contract with MBK Engineers in the amount of $1,093,200 for the services to support West Sacramento Levy Improvement Program.
I'll second. Right, it's been moved by Mayor Protem Kristoff and seconded by Councilmember Ledesma. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, hearing none? Motion carries unanimously. That brings us to item 12, which is a presentation and update on the design of the Bridge District Water Storage Facility and Park Project.
Welcome, Councilmember Ledesma, and welcome back, Mayor Cabaldon and Councilmember Johansson. You know, as you, you may or may not be aware of, the Bridge District Water Storage Facility and Park Project is a, is not only a vital infrastructure component, you know, for future development of the Bridge District, the enhancement is also a needed improvement for public safety through increased fire flow. The project team is here tonight to present an update of the design progress since council awarded the project, design project to Corolla Engineers, to the team led by Corolla Engineers in July. Currently, the project is at, overall project is at 25% complete. The conceptual design is, you know, is, it is what is being presented tonight. We would like to say it's close to 100%. Of course, you know, in consideration of your input and direction and comments and any questions, we'll try to address.
It might be 0%, right? Somewhere between 0 and 100, though.
You know, before I hand this, you know, over to Chris Cleveland, who will do, he's much better than I am at, you know, doing these public speaking engagements, as I'm a typical civil engineer. It would help if we could, you know, save some of the questions to the very end, and then that way, you know, Chris and I can try to respond to all of them at the same time. Okay? And with that, I'd like to introduce Chris Cleveland of Corolla Engineers.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Chris Cleveland with Corolla Engineers. I'm the project manager for the consulting team, working with city staff. Also with me tonight are a couple of my team members I'd just like to recognize. Dan Miller, he's our landscape architect, working on the park portion of the project with Calendar Associates. And Tim Richards, he's our project architect with Sarah Architects. So if we could put the presentation on, please. As Vin said, this is a, we're at about a 25% level of design. That means that what we're presenting tonight are concepts of the project, and we are looking for any input, questions you may have, and we hope to take those. And if you so move tonight, we'll move forward with completing the design, and I'll show you schedule of the overall project as part of the presentation. This is a challenging project because not very often do we combine a public works project tank and pump station with a park project. And even more challenging, we don't try and fit it on to about an acre and a half, two acres of land. Typically, we're doing tank and park, or tank and pump station projects on about three to five acres, let alone the park. So it's been not only a challenging project, but also, I think, the team, both city staff and us, has taken it as an opportunity to really think out of the box on this project and try and prevent some, present some things here tonight that provide an asset and enhancement to the neighborhood and the Bridge District overall. So tonight, I'm going to provide you a brief recap of what we've done to date, talk about the opportunities and constraints of the site, go through the public outreach process that we used. It's been a pretty extensive and very involved public outreach process to get to this point. Tell you some of the things we heard through that outreach process and how we've tried to respond to those. We'll present the design concept, talk about the schedule, and then any questions you may have. So this is a site here. North is up, and we have the existing ironworks loft and homes up along here. These are future lofts in this area. More of the lofts are built back in this area. We have the rail yard moving along this side of the site, and another property owner with no current development on this side of the site. The biggest piece we had to fit on to this property is a water tank, and the size of that water tank was already determined at 3 million gallons. And so that gives us a certain range of heights and diameters that we can use to meet all the different criteria to make it a successful project. We also have to fit in a pump station, and so this is about the size footprint we started with of the pump station. And that left us basically with two sides of the park and maybe some room in here in the middle to work around. The tank really didn't fit in other locations, and other geometries of a tank, I'm happy to answer questions on that, but really circular tank is the best option even in this particular circumstance. So we want to first understand what other opportunities there might be. We certainly want to understand from a park point of view how we might access the site, both from the neighborhoods and from maybe some people coming outdoors, from out of the region, but within the district. We also want to look at what it might be looking like from the ironworks, certainly, because that's an existing development. And we also have US 50 down in this area being able to see it from the backside. So we really, really don't have a backyard on this project. We need to be thinking 360 degrees as we develop the project concepts. We want to look also at pedestrian access and make sure that, you know, the Bridge District is very much a walkable area, so we want to continue that. We want to make sure we have areas where we can have pedestrians cross from the loft apartments and lofts and houses, as well as from other parts of the district, and then have some focal points to kind of draw people in to the park from outside as they're approaching. So the public outreach process to date, we started with a series of four public meetings. We had a neighborhood workshop actually in the ironworks development itself and invited all the neighbors, as well as other district residents. We had a meeting with the formerly the Triangle Advisory Committee, the developer group that's been meeting. We met with them. We met with two city commissions, the Arts Commission and the Parks and Community Services Commission, both separately, and presented some basic concepts and outlines of ideas and asked mostly, though, for opportunities and things that they would like to see incorporated into the project. We then took that and developed a conceptual development of the project, about a 10% design. And then we came back around for a large public workshop in this forum right here and presented them based on what we had heard and gathered feedback from them and made a few more tweaks and went back and refined that concept and put together a preliminary design report, and that's where we stand tonight.
Chris, I'm a little concerned about time because I know you have 20 of these slides, and we're on slide number two.
Very good.
I'm sure what our staff told, what our staff asked you to do in terms of time presentation, but we're not looking at another 15 to 20 minutes, are we?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, so public input. We heard a lot of things, and we tried to address them. They wanted us to maximize available park space, so we actually reduced the tank diameter and made it a taller tank to make the same volume. We focused efforts on tank aesthetics. It is going to be a big tank. No one necessarily wants to have a tank there, but let's try and make the best of it we can. We should make sure that they complement the ironworks development because it's already there. There's a preference for a concrete tank. We did look into that and do a cost analysis, but we determined it was not in the project budget to do a concrete tank, so it's right now going to be a steel tank. There were safety concerns from the public. There's a rail yard right there and with a park next to that. We needed to take those things into account. And we wanted to connect the tank to the park. There's going to be a very secure fence, obviously, for a water infrastructure, but we wanted to make sure that outside of that, that there were some connecting elements between the two that tied them together, provide some opportunity for artistic involvement. And many of the residents gave us feedback that they have dogs, and they'd like to be able to bring their dogs to this park and make that use. And then maximize the usage with flexible spaces. It's a small site, so we don't want to lock down a lot of space with just single usage. So this is our concept that we developed, and I'll walk you through it very briefly. We obviously have a storage tank and the pump station, and we break it up into three areas. We have a plaza area, an active park space, and a passive park space. So we'll talk about the active park space first. We did incorporate safety and security into the project, and we also provided pedestrian So on the active park space, if we start up here with a pump station, normally we would build this very utilitarian block and standing seam metal roof, just rectangular and flat roof or pitched roof. We've tried to do more than that to bring an asset to the park. So here, we're looking at a model of the pump station. We've actually created a butterfly roof with windows at the top, and we're going to be catching rainwater in a, into a cistern and collecting that. And then it's going to be running down through a, what's called a runnel feature, all the way down through this side of the park. And there's going to be some interactive features here that we're providing. Instead of just a blank wall, we're going to actually provide portals where people can go up and look and see what's going on inside the pump station, possibly some interpretive panels describing water going on inside. As we move back, there's just different areas of use. There's some play features, two different play areas for different age groups. And then we move farther down, and we have some kind of more lawn areas to hang out. We've created kind of a ripple effect to kind of capture the overall water theme and fireworks theme. We're going to be adorning the tank with actually a series of colored pipes, which then come out in radiuses out from the tank into the park to connect the elements. As we move farther down, you can see the runnel here with some park bench spaces, keeping the fireworks concept all the way through. And finally, the very end entrance from this side with some sort of, probably a signage-type feature. The plaza and passive space, we have a plaza that basically serves as a connecting element between the active side and the passive side, and there's lots of opportunities here for your basic park functions, as well, you know, bike racks and benches and more hardscape. And then over on the passive park side, it's more of a contemplative side, softer side, less structured. And we have a picnic shelter. This is an older rendition of that picnic shelter. Right now, we're looking at something to mirror the pump station roof in an architectural style, as well as some walkways and other, you can see the pipes coming out here into the park area to connect those. We also wanted to think about at nighttime, what they were going to be seeing... We also wanted to think about at nighttime, what they were going to be seeing in the neighborhood, and so we've talked about some enhancements with lighting, maybe backlighting the pipes on the tank, not in any obtrusive or, you know, big way where we're lighting up the sky, but something that's architecturally pleasing, carrying some light out into the park spaces. We also do have a small water feature out here. It's a misting feature, again, carrying on the theme of water and pipes into the park. And I wanted to show you, this is a concept for Bridge District buildout that was developed by the planning department, and I wanted to show you where our tank sits. Right now, it's going to be a large tank, because there's not a lot out there, but upon buildout, the tank and pump station are shown in there, about the same size as it would be. So it's not as overpowering, certainly, once things get built up around it as planned. As far as next steps go, we've already done the public outreach and our preliminary design. We're here tonight for your action, and then we'll move into final design if approved. We'll come back to you again prior to going out for bidding. And then a construction period. Our goal for startup is to be up and running by the end of 2012. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mayor Portem Kristof.
You said earlier that the site's a small site, and you have some major infrastructure to fit within that small site. Is there really enough room to adequately put in a park? I mean, you know, I mean, the city has built a number of parks. I mean, so is this something that is going to be truly usable?
I could have my landscape architect answer that, but I think in general, our response would be yes.
Okay.
I think that it's a neighborhood park. It's not a citywide park. It's meant to serve the local community the most. And so I think with that programming in mind is how we've laid the park out.
Did you think about doing the underground water tank?
Yes.
You thought about it? It's just too expensive?
Yeah, there's also some technical issues with groundwater and poor soil conditions in that area.
Yeah, right. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Johansson.
Yeah, thank you. Have you given any thought to the artistic design of the tank itself? This could have the tendency to be iconic. It's so close to Tower. And right now, it's fairly utilitarian, and we do, I think, have an art and public space policy here, but some incorporation of art around the tank, you know, without an elaborate design change, but some way to do that.
Yes, in fact, we developed several design concepts for enhancing the tank itself, and the one that we selected, most of the pipes you actually, actually, all the pipes you see on that tank are not utilitarian. They're actually not the actual water pipes. They're actually going to be designed architecturally instead of utilitarian. And so this concept was the one that was overwhelmingly selected through our public outreach project from the two or three that we presented to them. I think there's definitely a coordination of kind of art issues. In fact, we are going to be working with the Arts Commission on an element of the project to get some input from either local artists or something else that they're choosing.
Mr. Ledesma.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation update tonight, and I was able to make during the summer one of your outreach sessions over at the neighborhood, and you had a lot of turnout, so I'm glad residents came out. And I'm assuming that they've been engaged eagerly. It seemed like an engaged neighborhood, that they've been, the response has been well. I mean, your workshops have been well attended, I'm assuming?
I would say that the last public workshop was not as well attended as the neighborhood one, but the residents that were there all were a hundred percent in support of the project.
And so far, what I've seen, based on where I saw it start earlier in the summer, where it looks terrific, the concept and the theme you know, I'm surprised you're able to get as far as you, as much as you can in that little, small area, because I went and walked it as well. One thing that came up during the discussions, and it's noted here in the staff report, that there was a concurrence that they wanted a relatively taller and smaller diameter tank. And I recall at that outreach center, you had mentioned that the higher you go up, the more the cost. I'm just, where have we been? Where are we now compared to where we were earlier in the summer? Did we go that route? Did it make it more expensive? And is it, are we going the way the residents wanted? I just wanted to find out where we are.
The short answer is yes. We did head that direction, and we went back and worked with the tank manufacturers and had a geotech report done in the meantime since that first meeting, and there are some geotechnical issues, soil issues there from a foundation point of view, that actually help us reduce the cost somewhat as we go to a smaller footprint. And so those costs have offset any other costs, so that we're about at the same cost at the current diameter that we were at that initial neighborhood.
So we did, we do up higher, smaller diameter, so we're maximizing the open space?
Yes.
Great. And I did notice in one of the slides you had for a park area, I liked the concept you're going to, tying in the themes of the pipe works, if we can, if it's in the budget, of course, finding opportunities. I saw it looked like an educational panel where people can learn about what the pump is actually being used for. So I think if we can find ways to incorporate that and stay in within our budget, I think that would be a good opportunity as well.
Okay.
So that would be my feedback.
So the change in diameter was, has the Parks Commission seen this since? Have they seen this essential program?
Yes. We came back and actually, after the second public workshop, had a special presentation, basically the same presentation to them last month.
And were they more enthusiastic than they were the first time?
Yes.
More unanimously enthusiastic than they were the first time?
Yes.
They were? Okay, good. And did you find a dog solution in this arrangement? In the active side, I couldn't tell if there was an enclosed, at one point, it looked like there was a short fence, but I couldn't really tell. Is there a dog solution in this park?
Our concept is that it needs to be a flexible space, and so to have a dedicated dog space was a real challenge in such a tight site, and it really didn't fit in with the parks' concepts for dog parks. It was just so small that it becomes a very challenging maintenance issue. And so what we've done is we provide those flexible spaces on the passive side to try and have more dog activity on that side and have kid, more child and family activity maybe on the other side. And so that short fence that you see there is more for child protection to the street. And the current concept is it's a very dog-friendly park. We have things incorporated like doggy water fountains, dog, you know, litter bags and those types of things, and flexible spaces in various aspects on that passive side of the park.
Good. I mean, I like it. I think it's a great solution. I mean, I was, you know, whispering to Mr. Vegas, you know, it's, there's, somewhere there ought to be a theater in here and a historic gallery and an art gallery and a coffee, a cafe and a childcare center, because it reminds me that squishing all this stuff is exactly what we did across the street at the community center. And actually, I mean, the constraints created something, you know, almost magical as a result, and I think there is that potential for what's emerging here. And the pipe works concept, artistically, I like a lot, in the same way that the calling out of what we've done, what we started with the Riverwalk, with the Egrits and the, which we then applied to the water tower in the Washington neighborhood, really created a sense of place and whimsy in Washington Square, which really was a significant contributor to the reemergence of that neighborhood. And so thinking about the effect of design on the character and place of a neighborhood is really important, so I appreciate that. It is a neighborhood park, and so there's not, it's not a museum, or it's not a children's museum that people will be coming from all over to learn about, you know, civil engineering. So if choices have to be made about, you know, where to spend money, to me, it's more about what is going to be of value to the neighborhood that's using it and how's it's going to be valued as a visual marker for the district, both from the freeway, from other parts of the district, from tall buildings, as opposed to making it into like a children's museum focused around water engineering, because that's only, you're not going to, if you live in that ironworks neighborhood or the Bridge District, you're not going to go there every weekend to learn more, a little bit more about how the city moves water around. So I like the concept, and I would, I'm certainly supportive of doing it, but as you get to the point where you've got to make some of these fine-grained decisions about dollars, to me, the thinking about the priority about what makes it best usable as a neighborhood park and what makes it best as a brand design element for the district are the critical components. And that piece is, to me, is an additional add-on, which adds a lot of value, but it's not the main thing. It's sort of like the one across the river. You know, folks don't really, I mean, it's used a lot, and it's beautiful, the water intake for the city of Sacramento, but it's not something that you, unless you're a tourist, you don't go back there repeatedly to learn a little bit more about the water intake. And so that's, I wouldn't invest a whole lot of money in that regard, but I think you've done an outstanding job in trying to overcome a lot of obstacles and create something that as a result is a whole lot, a whole lot of value for the neighborhood.
Yeah. No, I like it, too. You're definitely limited in your constraint in terms of what you can do, and I think you've maximized that. I like the pipe work concept. It's embracing it rather than trying to run away from it. Looks great, and if the neighbors like it, even better, even better. Thank you.
All right. This is just to cover your whatever presentation.
Is there?
Is she correct?
More than twenty-six minutes.
There's no action required and no further? Do you need something else from us?
Well, so his direction is to proceed with completing design?
Sure. Yes, the city manager has all the direction that he needs, and if there's any lack of clarity, he'll make sure it's known in the department director's meeting tomorrow. All right, thank you both. Thanks to the team. All right, that brings us to council calendar. Ms. Richardson.
Yes, Mayor, we have a couple of holiday activities that are coming up this Saturday at eight AM. At the new community center will be breakfast with Santa, and this is an event that's being sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce. And then next Friday night, February, I mean, February, December tenth, we'll have the holiday, annual holiday tree lighting out here at City Hall.
All right. Any questions on the calendar? Next Friday, the tenth, is the Secog Regional Forum. This year's theme is the, is RUCs, the Rural Urban Connection Strategy. It's the green print successor to the blueprint, and I'll be there, but they're certainly encouraging all the mayors and council members and supervisors throughout the region to attend. It's next Friday, the tenth, that I believe it starts at seven thirty in the morning. The intention that it allows folks to get to work.
Secog office?
No, it's, I want, you know, I don't know, actually. I have it, I'll get it. By the time the meeting's over, I will have it, but it's a large event, so it's not, I know it's not at the Secog office. Okay, city manager reports?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
City attorney reports?
Nothing, sir.
Okay, you're trying to stop me from getting this information, best of no. Nice try. Staff direction from members of the council? All right, we'll send the email out. All right, Mr. Vegas moves. Mayor Portem Kristof seconds. Set the meeting be adjourned. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Meeting is adjourned.